Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday, June 5th, 2024, meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. On Wednesday, March 29th, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, and Act Making Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2023, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain divisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March 31st, 2025. We are here, we are live, and we are remote. All stand and join me in speaking.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the rule, Commissioner Steady.
I am President.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Shea is present, we have a roll call, we have a call. Number three, executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law 6, uh, General 38. Want to read that, Joe? We, we do have an executive session today with legal counsel?
Yes, right.
Bill, is legal counsel on?
Uh, not yet, Commissioner.
Not yet, okay, I'm gonna go to minutes, the open session meeting of March 26th, May 26th. Sam, wait, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd be pleased to move approval of the meeting minutes of, uh, is it May 26th?
May 26th.
I have May 29th. Oh, we have, yeah. I have minutes of, it may, 5:29?
Maybe it wasn't off, it is 29.
It's the 29th. May 29th.
Okay, that's.
I'll make that motion for approval.
We're gonna correct that. Motion made, seconded, except for minutes of May 29th, regular meeting, oh, 2024, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You can't do the, still the weights and measures, because he's gonna take a little time and heal us today. We're gonna do general, uh, public comment, number six, public comment, each week we have public comment. If anyone wants to come in and see us or out in Zoom land, do we have anybody that's registered or? Register corner?
Sure. Nice to see everybody.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, uh, my public comment is, you know, coming over here, trying to be collaborative, especially with respect to these registry staff positions, both union and non-union. This should be filled, uh, the registry promotions, you know, whether it's union or non-union should be filled. So I, I, I really think, I would like to sit down and, and make that and convey that to the commissioners. I, I have a letter I'm gonna deliver, I'm gonna read it. Uh, on May 29th, 2024, your board did not approve two registry union promotions. These two union promotions were part of a job postings authorized by me in my capacity as Registered Deeds. These union job postings were put on union bulletin boards that were torn down off the union bulletin boards by Human Resource Director Michelle Labadini. This is unprecedented action, which needs to be reviewed by you as the Norfolk County Commissioners. My registry senior management staff has asked of Ms. Labadini, who directed her to remove the union job posting documents off the bulletin boards, there's a response to that question. Was the removal of posted registry union staff positions directed by County Director Crone? It is my hope that each of you did not authorize this at minimum professional, unprofessional action that certainly has implications under state and federal law, laws and regulations. The denial of these promotions violates a valid union contract. Furthermore, the tabling of a non-union registry staff position uh, by the county commissioners for a United States Army veteran and current registering employee Jonathan Thomas took place on February 28th, 2024. I am enclosing in the letter of giving you the agenda in which you tabled this submitted blue personnel paper. While you as Norfolk County Commissioners have signed well over 70 personnel papers since February 28th, 2024 for various county departments, including the golf course, the personnel paper of registry staff person Jonathan Thomas has not been put before the Norfolk County Commissioners for a vote since February 28th, 2024. Again, I, I, I wanna be collaborative, that's why I'm here, I'd like to talk with the three commissioners and, and resolve all this. But it's clear once again that the registry is being singled out and retaliated against by the county director and his staff. This retaliation has been more enhanced, deliberate and frequent, given the trial court and appellate court decisions in favor of the Norfolk Registry of Deeds. These court decisions highlight the unlawful violations of state law by County Director John J. Cronin that have taken place. A meeting with you as county commissioners is needed to make sure registry promotions and staff appointments are implemented. I also seek assurances from each of you that this retaliation against the Norfolk Registry of Deeds staff, be it union staff or non-union staff, or for that matter, entry level positions, is not being condoned and/or overlooked by you as elected Norfolk County Commissioners. I'm here to discuss this in the here and now when, you know, the appointments come up for the, the union. Uh, but certainly I hope we can discuss this, uh, these employee matters whenever you want, you know, schedule a meeting. I want it to be a collaborative discussion so that things like registry promotions, union promotions, staff appointments, uh, whether union or non-union, that we move forward in a more collaborative, uh, and, you know, because, uh, all of you had a, a role in building a registry, being the best registry in Massachusetts, and it's just unfortunate that, you know, I wanna keep it going that way.
Chairman, that's, uh, Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Steady.
Thank you.
And the director.
That's what you did, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Reg. Bill, oh, okay. I'm now gonna go back to number three, executive session, because our counsel, Scott Lopez is on, so, uh, I need the motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion. So I make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, then the chair so declares.
Motion made.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor. I, I have declared that we need to go into executive session. I will also declare that at the end of the executive session, we will resume our regular meeting with item number five. Roll call vote to go into executive session, Commissioner Steady.
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
And Chairman Shea, well, she has three to zero, we're in executive session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will return. 24. Norfolk County Commissioners, if no one objects, I'd like to go to item number 13, which is bid openings, which were at 130. So we're gonna invite Nancy, hi Nancy.
Hello.
I think we have two bid openings today, what are they, Nancy?
We have one for electrical work as needed for the Norfolk County Agricultural High School.
Okay.
For a period of one year with two one-year options to renew.
Let's do that first.
Bid from.
Is John still here? No. Okay.
We have bid from Revolution Electrical. Auto Rev. M.A.S. They have bid for regular time. Um, licensed electrician, first year, $140. Second year, $148. Third year, $155. Electrician's helper, first year, $70, second year, $73.50. Third year, $78. Overtime, licensed electrician. Year one, $171, year two, $180, year three, $189. Electrician's helper, first year, overtime, $85.50 per hour. Second year, $90 per hour, third year, $94.50. Discount on parts, 2%. Yes, I have Steel Light Body Electricians out of Walpole, M.A.S.
Steel, you mean Steel Light?
Steel, yeah, Steel Light Body. S.T.E.E.L.E. Licensed electrician per hour, first year, $97.07 an hour. Second year, $99.04. Third year, $100.28. Electrician's helper. First year, $46.40, second year, $47.84, third year, same as second. Overtime, licensed electrician, $145.60 an hour. Second year, $148.56. Third year, $150.42. Electrician's helper, first year, $69.60. Second year, $71.76, third year, same as second. Discount on parts, 10%.
I can't believe you.
Steel Light Bodies, they're out of Walpole. There we have Dagel Electric, Construction Corp., out of Wilmington, M.A.S. Licensed electrician, regular hours. First year, $149.50, second year, $150.54.50. Third year, $159.60, electrician's helper per hour. First year, $100. Second year, $103. Third year, $104. Overtime, licensed electrician, first year, $198.80. Second year, $205.50. Third year, $212.30. Electrician's helper per hour overtime, first year, $133, second year, $137, third year, $142. Discount on parts, 5%. And those are the three bids received.
Okay, that concludes the electrical work question, any questions, Commissioner? I have one.
Do you want to make a motion, put them under advisement?
Yeah, after I ask my question.
Yes, good.
Is all work at the, and I'm sorry, John, look. Is all work at the agricultural school done by the vendor, or does the county electrician respond at normal conditions?
The, the vendor.
Noon time.
The vendor does all the work.
Okay, so, so our electrician on this side does it.
Does, no.
Okay, that's fine. I have no other questions, go ahead.
He's in charge of everything on this side, but they, they, they use the vendor.
That's funny.
Yeah. So I move that we take under advisement, uh, all bids, uh, read this morning, set this afternoon for electrical work, as needed for the Norfolk Aggie School.
Second. Motion made and seconded to take under advisement the bids for electrical work as needed in Norfolk County High School decision to be made in the near future. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of that. Carpenter work as needed in Norfolk County Agricultural School.
Again, for a period of one year, two, one year options to renew, there's one, and one bid received from A.G.M. Construction. And they have bid regular time, eight to five hour rate, first year, $76.92. Second year, $79.42. Third year, $81.92. We have no, this is a contract that doesn't have any overtime.
I think so.
It's just into.
That's only bid.
It's only bid.
That the current contractor?
It is.
I'll take a motion.
Can we act on it right now?
I don't believe we can. We always take the, we always take a little.
You know what's going on?
We're not gonna, I don't believe it's gonna take long, right Nancy?
I'll, 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 I'll do everything to make sure.
So move, uh, we take it under advisement, the copper to work, as needed for Norfolk County Agricultural.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you Nancy, you have anything else for Nancy? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go back to the front page, sorry for playing this agenda bingo, but we'll, we'll find, we'll get there. Number five, appointment, County Sealer of Weights and Measures.
Right.
Sealer, come on up. Sealer. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and gentlemen.
This is a little update.
Mr. Sealer. Um, these are my summer duds.
Okay, good, you had a different color before.
Yes, sir.
Was that green?
It was a darker blue, I believe.
Very good.
Thank you for your time, um, I mean, obviously, we're coming up on the one-year anniversary of this program. Um, so just to give you gentlemen a quick oversight, um, during the fiscal year 2023, the Weights and Measures Department, we sealed about 570 scales at 90 businesses, um, tested 900 gasoline meters, which is about 450 pumps, at 50 stations. Um, in the winter, I started what's called the Price Verification Program. Price Verification, um, is authorized under Mass. General Law 98, Section 56D, which is basically, in a nutshell, um, any business that has three or more registers and uses a barcode scanner, we have to go in and we're looking for misleading or inaccurate pricing. So we go around and, um, like supermarket, we do 100 items and they need a 98% or better in order to pass. Not passing gets very expensive for them, it's $200 fine to flunk, plus it's $200 per item. That flunks and then I have to go back in 30 days. Um, most stores pass and it's a biennial, um, so it's every two years that we're able to do, do this and it just keeps them on their toes. Um, as you're aware, in March 2024, we added Westwood to our territory and we've already made significant progress there. Um, as you're also probably aware, we are in talks with Denham. Um, and in conjunction with that, we're looking to add some additional help here in the department and Assistant Director, um, Ashley and myself are working with the towns, trying to get the fees all in kind of more of a, an even basis, uh, trying to get them more towards, I guess, revenue, revenue neutrality. Some are still using the state's fees from the early 90s and, you know, so, like a pharmacy could be like $3 for a scale. You know, so you could, you could spend the morning going around and, and invoice the town like $12. You know, where it should be like $25 a scale, just cause even though it's a small lightweight scale, they're very sensitive. Um, so I think overall the, the program is going quite well. I'm getting excellent feedback from both the, uh, businesses as well as the towns, um, and I'm grateful to, to be heading this up. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any questions? Commissioner?
Sure, uh, great job.
You had this, this.
I do, yes, I do, yep, I just scanned it, um, so just on the most important issue maybe, one of the fees, how do you go about then getting the towns to bring it in gear and get it more wide now?
So we, what's your method? What we've done is we've made recommendations, we kind of show them, hey, you know, if you were charging this instead of what you're charging now, you'd be bringing this in. Uh, we've done these recommendations based on other towns within the county. It's not just the towns that, you know, we're serving here as Norfolk County, but, you know, hey, everyone in the county, this is what they're charging. You guys were charging this because of the fees. Um, Westwood, as a matter of fact, just increased their fees, but they're doing it over three years. So, you know, like the pharmacy scales gone, went from $3 to $6 and change, and then next year, they'll be $10, and then the following year, they'll be locked in.
Okay, my, my, my bad, let me define the question better. Are you dealing with then with like the town administrator or select board? How do you get the fees to be, is it board of health or select board?
It would have to be select board.
Move up.
For, for most of those, it would have to be select boards, um, I'm dealing more at the Inspection Services Department level.
Okay.
Um, I've offered to sit in front of the select board, as I have done this for, you know, for Abington and other towns as well. Um, you know, who, who better to explain why we need to go from X to Y? Um, but some towns are just reluctant to do it.
Okay, so then my last question, is there anything that we can do to assist you on that, like would it help for us to send out a letter saying, for example, in Canton, a little summary, hey, here's what you did, you're very happy, it's working well, but you might wanna look at your fees coming from the Commissioner's office? Would that be something that would help?
I think that would be a great idea, um, it's something Phil Buckley and I are analyzing, especially as we're drawing to a conclusion at the end of the fiscal year, and we're able to, we're, we're tracking it much better this year.
Yeah, just, I know, so cheers, I suggest that we, working with our, our, Phil Buckley, of course, uh, we send a letter out to each of those towns and let them know a summary of what they're doing, and perhaps to look at certain fees, if it's appropriate, and so on and so forth, just a kind of a, I think it might be good, get a letter from the Commissioner's, along with your conversations, this will help a little bit, you know?
Understood.
Yep, and Denham, how's Denham coming on board maybe?
We just met with them yesterday.
Okay.
So I know they're anxious to do it, but, I mean, it just takes a little bit of time.
Can we look at, um, are we allowed to look at towns that might be on the bubble, like outside of the county? Like say Mendon or, uh?
I'm not able to speak to that.
Okay.
We, we've had some preliminary thoughts and, um, ideas about that. It hasn't really moved beyond any really extensive level of discussion, Commissioner, but uh, suffice to say that if we had the capacity to serve additional communities in Norfolk County, it was at capacity, saturated. Um, examining communities outside the county is a different paradigm. Uh, the brief conversation included the idea of what kind of fees would we charge them? They're non-towny based, but we use and model some of the schools do, for example, by putting a premium on.
Right.
So, um, it hasn't come to our attention, I think one of the things that you're hearing from Bill in one short year, and also we can build Buckley a lot of credit between Mr. Mull and Mr. Buckley, they've really grown a nice program that's caught a lot of great attention. The community's coming to us, they see this as a working model, but now it's professionally run, they don't have to worry about it.
Right, right.
And I think that word start, may start to reach those inverts that you were just talking about, so there may be an inevitability to your question, which we haven't really matured beyond handling the capacity of this.
Okay.
I think you might be on to something.
All right, good. Always like to look at it. Great job. I'm all set, Mr. Tim, that letter would be good to help you out. Keep it moving forward, so.
Any questions, Chris?
Yeah.
I got a couple of light questions. Just from my edification, what's the general law that governs all this? I'm really good at reading boring stuff, but just from my.
So it's all, I believe it's all under, uh, uh, chapter 98.
98.
98.
Okay. If we add Denham, it appears you know, originally, I, in my mind, thought of some of the more, smaller towns, which, which are these five, Rantham's being the smallest, but despite no means that's small of a town, but it's, you know, I mean, if you add Denham to this, you're gonna, a chunk here.
Yeah.
And, uh, we are gonna add an associate to work with the Sealer and you know, to get it completed a bit longer before just maybe August 1st, but by December 1st is our goal. I mean, I think I think this is a spectacular first year, it's a win-win for everyone. We get the fees straightened out, get it on, out of the red hair. I assume if it's red, that those are towns losing money?
They.
Generally speaking?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
It's also my understanding that we do have.
Except for a great county, Canton, is making.
Yeah, yeah, love that.
Yeah, they made, uh.
Proud to see that.
Well, it's all right.
And their fees are, are in line with what they should be.
Right.
You know? There's like very little tweaking of their fees, I would recommend.
Mostly Dunkin' Donuts coffee, do you think?
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So people drink. Could be anything.
We are coffee lovers in Canton, that's the national brand is located there. Phil Buckley, do you want to say something?
Canton's helping everyone, because your fees are on the higher end, so all of your neighbors can point to them. So when we do these fee studies, just say, well, Canton's charging $25 for a 10 on scale.
Which is good.
That gives everyone else cover, so I think we're, I'm very happy in that, and.
What, these are things like, I know the former selectmen, sometimes these things are under the radar, no one looks at them
That's what happens, yeah.
One guy did it and they probably did it for 50 years, and now it's all new, so as I said, this is great work, great work for everybody, but let's add some more to the layer, have a letter go out or an email sent out, whatever, if it's appropriate.
I think the best thing is, we're, we're at a year now.
Yeah.
So a, as we do a, a year end, I think we could put that le, letter right on there.
Yeah.
Have all the information.
Yeah.
And the, to your point about things cited by Paul Ritt, Denham has changed their fees since 1990.
There you go.
So it's, it's a very, like a gas truck.
It happens, so.
It's $20 still, which is, which is crazy, but we're also, I think, the other piece is we're finding of these five towns, a lot of them weren't billing at all. And so when, when they talked to us, they said, hey, the state was doing this, and eight months later, the state would say, this is everything we did for eight months, and now you have to go back to Sunoco in January and August and say, by the way, we were there, don't you remember, here's your bill.
Think of it this way, Mr. Chairman, if you add Denham and then one more town, that means we're servicing 25% of the county. 25% of the county, that's not bad. And then there's another, I, I mean, I guess another 25% have their own people in place, they have some. So there's that nebulous, there's more towns that could be coming on.
And, and that, that said, sir, is, um, oftentimes, the sealer can be someone who's already working with the town.
Right.
So in Denham's case, it is the code enforcement officer.
I see.
So their responsibility as a code enforcement officer is certainly more important
Definitely.
than, you know, like, oh geez, I can, I can check on this potentially unsafe structure.
Right.
Or I can go put gasoline in cans for.
That frees that person up to do more inspections.
Correct.
And that makes sense too, exactly right.
If we took that dirt off the house.
It makes sense, does.
I have another question, but John, go ahead first.
Just to emphasize, um, there is a posting up for the associate, the Commissioner Shea just mentioned. The posting went up last week, it would be, um, an individual who can work alongside Bill, helps spread the load. He's, um, obviously carrying quite a lot of responsibility now with these communities. If we were to add one man at Denham, um, he'll be a relief, so that posting is up until it's filled.
Right.
Michelle's done a great job broadcasting it to a lot of different areas, um, schools and so forth, to help recruit and find individuals who are interested in this nice career, I might say, so.
You know the Aggie got sent this?
Did we, did the Aggie school get sent this?
Yes. Oh, did this?
No, 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 the.
Oh, yeah, they're very much on board, I talked to John last week, again, and he promised the summer would be done, and I gave him a timeline of this summer, so.
Okay, perfect, good.
And then, if they're.
Good.
If, if, if we don't get a candidate out of there, out of the Aggie school, we'll go right on to the rest of the other, any of the bits, it'll go right on. One last question. Fuel trucks, I understand, they must be under fuel meters tested, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, how do you find out every fuel truck in Needham, for instance? Do they have a business certificate, or how, how, the town have them registered?
So it's a little bit of, we get, got initial, um, lists from either the state or from the town.
Okay.
Um, you know, I do a little bit of a Google search as well, and, and, you know, and then it's just.
Because they, they must be under some license.
I would think, yeah.
So if you was fuel, that's, you'd, you'd be able to pick it up.
Right.
Okay, I have no questions, I'm very excited, I thought it was a great idea, it's proven so far to be a good idea. Let's take it step at a time, Denham's very important in, uh, getting a second person on board, so and Bill can teach them from, from the ground up, you know, have no preconceived notions of it, you go method.
Correct.
And we'll keep going.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Very much, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Old business I have known. Let me just, we just did. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration, first group is from President's Golf Course.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll be glad to make the motions, this is for the President's Golf Course. Um, the first three are all notice of job title change. The first is for Edmund Karabasi of South Boston as Seasonal Golf Course Associate at the rate stated, and that is effective date 6/6/24. Second's for Mark Welch as Seasonal Golf Course Associate at the rate stated, effective date 6/6/24. And the third is for Maya Dunedin of South Boston as Seasonal Golf Course Associate, rate stated, effective 6/6/24. I'll make that motion for those three to be approved, so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is, it is approved.
The next two, Mr. Chairman, a notice of resignation. Notice of resignation, I move approval of Kevin McGuire of Quincy as grounds crew, rate stated 6/6/24, and a resignation of Michael Brown of East Bridgewater as grounds crew, uh, rate stated, effective date 6/6/24, so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, it is a vote next, Agriculture School.
I have one, I move approval and notice of contingent employment for Addison Hosmer of Walpole as a student worker, garden, and the rate stated effective date 6/17/24, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next, Registry of Deeds.
Are we holding on that?
I think, I think we were gonna talk to Michelle about that.
Like to, uh, turn that over to you, Mr. Chairman, to Michelle.
Uh, well, why don't we introduce it here, but we'll have Michelle's comments. First one, Commissioner.
We have a promotion, a notice of promotion for Margaret Brennan of Holbrook as the head clerk, replacing Patricia Rogers. And the effective date of the appointment was six-three-twenty-four.
Okay, that's the first one, second one.
Second one is a notice of promotion for Patricia Rogers. Uh, as head administrative clerk, replacing Neil Donahue. And the rate stated, effective date six-three-twenty-four. That was all I had for registry.
Okay, under the regi- under these two, uh, this, uh, and under these two items in the Registry of Deeds, we have comments from our Director of Human Resources, Michelle.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
As you know, we have, you've adopted Employee Handbook with process and procedures regarding, um, positions and the processes. So, the first step is a requisition form, which is this form here. Um, that shows that there's money in the budget, there's approval, and this is the first step. That comes to me, we do approval, we make sure there's money in the budget, we know who was replacing the positions. The positions, when they were posted, they were just job descriptions, I didn't know who they were replacing. The second step in the process is the job description. After the job description's completed by us, it's then posted by us. This is the new process in the handbook that HR is controlling all of this, and the one responsible for all these steps. These steps were sent over to the Registry of Deeds on February twenty-eighth. Um, and have been forwarding and working with them ever since regarding, um, the promotions that they have over there for non-union and union positions. Um, so then step four is review the department with all, review with the department all the resumes. The department participates in the interview process, the department selects the individual, it's just a team effort that we all participate with. And this is a process that we agree to, to follow, and that process is not being followed. So these positions have not been awarded because these steps have not been followed. I just wanted to bring your attention to that.
Commissioner, Director.
Um, after, after discussing, uh, the status of these particular positions with Labor Council, it is. Labor Council's recommendations to the Commissioners at this point to reject these items, send them back for compliance by the register, not table the many for.
Commission's discussion.
I'm just, um. I'm puzzled, I don't understand why the policy is not being followed. It's a, it's, it's for all the departments, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Not just the registry.
And other departments following this policy.
And so, for example, if the golf has a change that we read today, is that director following that procedure? And filling it out the way you want?
The procedure is different for seasonal employees.
Okay, well, let's take.
But yes, they're all following, they're all following the same procedure, maintenance had a couple of promotions.
Right, okay.
They follow the same procedure, every department follows this procedure.
This is countywide.
Countywide.
And our registrar is aware of this, right?
He is.
And it's just a simple matter of following procedure.
That's correct, as far as I can see, yep.
I would hate to speculate, because that's a dangerous thing. You know, in view of some ongoing litigation, that maybe he feels this is part of the litigation or something? I mean, I just don't understand, but this is, like, this is a different type of area, right?
Not to my knowledge, but John, what's your comment, please?
Um, Commissioner Stady, um, I don't want to speak to Reg. O'Donnell, but there's been some evidence that the language within the Registry of Deeds, collective bargaining agreement. Which provides the registers certain authority for job posting and recommendations for appointment may supersede this process.
Ah.
That discussion, um, was vetted when the policy, the handbook was drafted. Labor Council insists that the language within the contract, although ambiguous and to some extent, um, more extensive than it probably needs to be, does not conflict. Does not conflict with the employee handbook. So subsequently, we're asking all departments, including the registry, to comply with this procedure. Uh, we certainly sympathize with the employees who've been affected by this, these are internal promotions.
Yeah.
We would very much like to move quickly on them. We have, uh, and I've mentioned this to this board before, we are exceedingly patient with our departments, including the registry, as they try to understand this process. Michelle and her team have done a great job training and informing and coaching. Um, if you only knew, if you only knew the number of emails that have gone back and forth, it's mind-boggling. One has to wonder why the clarity of what we're asking for isn't quite hitting its mark, but we'll continue to be patient. We want very much for these promotions to come before you, once, once the procedures are, are complied with. But, uh, the, uh, the, the guess to you, to your, uh, to answer your question, the guess has to be that the registry is under some other illusion that the collective bargaining agreement trumps the handbook, it does not.
Sounds like it.
It does not, it, it acts in its own way, and our handbook stands.
Quick follow-up, if I could, please, here.
Yeah, yeah.
So could we, is it possible for us to send to Mr. O'Donnell that legal counsel's opinion? That shows that this supersedes any language in the contract, and therefore clearly, you know, we are, this is a procedure that ought to follow.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, excellent question, I, I am working on a document right now that will hopefully find its way to the registry.
Okay, because then, at that, at that point, I mean, I'm only speculating, I have no knowledge firsthand. If, if, if he's following a bylaw that says, hey, I'm supposed to do it, and it, it could be a, a conflict of law, I would think, classic conflict of laws. But if the counsel is saying to us, this supersedes it, this is our policy, let's get on board and follow it, and there's really no reason not to do it at that point. So let's, let's make it as clear as possible.
Sounds good to me.
Go ahead, John, and then I'm gonna make a comment.
I know, we're trying.
Just one other point, Commissioner, uh.
He came here over here, yeah, I'm sorry, John.
Touched on in this letter.
But he did touch upon that and said, I wanna work collaboratively with us. That was his comment about the appointment, not, not the other issues that we have, but on this. And really, is, you gotta be sympathetic with the employees, I feel bad for these employees, the ones who are not, not getting their extra raise or extra assignment. So I do, I think all of us feel that way, oh, we all wanna get this thing done, so, let's see what we can do, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
That's kinda right. Um, these positions are union positions, and I offered you my thought that maybe the collective bargaining agreement is a, is a, is a reason why there might be some ambiguity. However, there's another position that is non-union, that was in play earlier in the year, is a vacancy that occurred. And, uh, through similar processes, we had difficulty getting the registry to comply with the procedure. That blue paper is ready to go, our human resources director has finally worked with the registry collaboratively, have an interview, have a posting, have a job description all lined up. And we've sent over a blue paper to get it signed. I was informed that moments after the register spoke to you so eloquently about his interest in collaborating with you. He went into our human resources office, and she was asking him to sign that blue paper. He rejected the opportunity to do that.
Today.
So, perhaps he does wanna have a meeting separately with you to discuss his misgivings, but he had the opportunity to collaborate, sign the blue paper and have that non-union position before you as early as next week. So, just an update, I'm sure we'll hear from him again, but we'll continue to stick to the plan and hold, uh, the handbook, uh, in our process up. Because I think it's, it's important that all departments be treated the same.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is it timely to hear from me now? This is Register O'Donnell, Bill O'Donnell.
Wait a minute, wait, one minute, Register.
Thank you.
Since I became a Commissioner, this has been a subject that Frank Gag, that he was working on, like, while I worked on. If, if, what's, the Abrams report said, you know, you have some issues in, 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 in your personnel issue, there were manner in which you can business your personnel.
Right.
You know, we, we, you know, this stuff is old, but we're in the process of trying to consolidate it all, come up with a uniform system.
Right.
But at no point do we, we as Commissioners reject people. That come in from all department heads, unless there's a reason, you know, passive physical, they don't, we don't deal in.
I've never seen it happen.
Any candidates, I mean, we, we'd like to.
Right.
Uh, keep. Keep the whole system flowing. If the, if the last question is, should there be system-wide postings, and the new book calls for it? We accepted the new book after a number of years, the old book was dated nineteen, eighteen ninety, no, nineteen eighty-seven. And, and, and nothing happened to two thousand and twenty-four, I mean, that's a long time.
Right.
So everyone could read the old book, well, the old book is gone, throw it in the fireplace. We're trying to uniform, we're trying to streamline, and that's what brings us to this. But at no point. Do we reject Johnny Jones and Mary Smith, uh, other than the fact that the paperwork isn't complete. As far as the system, you know, the, the, the book. So, either we're gonna go by the book or we're not, and that is, in my mind, the only issue.
If it's a matter of it being, uh, pro forma, that's the right legal word, if it is, if it is. Could we, I could, could, would I may, out of order, if I made a motion to approve those contention on the registrar filling out the paperwork you need? That way, these people get their promotion, but then he has to just fill it out, and then.
This is, there's a process, he has to fill out the requisition.
Right.
Then I have to prepare the job descriptions, post the job descriptions.
I see.
Collect the resumes.
Okay.
Then have a, an interview process with the Registry of Deeds and myself with the, all the candidates, and then they select, we all select as a, a, a committee. The, so there's a, a process that hasn't been followed, it's just not one step.
So for all these appointments here, that is the process we follow.
For every, for every position we have.
You actually have interviews with each person?
I do.
You have a committee, you said?
Yeah, I work with the department, whoever they assign, and, um. In, in the non-union position at the Registry of Deeds, the Registry of Deeds was part of that interview process as well, as well as HR.
Okay.
And the candidate, we interview the candidate together, we rated the candidate.
Okay.
That's the process we do for every position.
Is, excuse me, is the job posting then, is to ensure fairness that people have a chance to bid on it, and, you know, apply, okay. That would make sense, that would make sense, I mean, you give your point. Um, how, how quick, how soon does something like this take, roughly? A week, two weeks?
Um, it could take a week, I mean, we'd have to have to po- post it according to the regulations, so it has to be posted internally for seven days, so, I would say two weeks.
Okay. Alright, that's all. Okay. Like I said, I, I'd love to hear, I know the registrar's on the phone or on the, yeah, call, I would like to know if there's a reason as to why. Uh, because I'm, I'm puzzled, I'm truthfully puzzled, everybody else is doing this, this is a new way. It's actually consistent with the Abraham Report, which we're trying to follow too.
Well, that's one, one thing, but we know, we knew we needed it.
And we got a new book, it's the way, you know, uh, alright, I'll stop talking.
Be honest, we'll stop talking. Let me just read this, well, no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna. Go ahead, Com- uh, Register O'Donnell.
Sure, I mean, that, you know, one of the reasons I wanna have a meeting with the Commissioners is to, to kinda, uh, you know, kind of go through all this. And I, I keep hearing everyone else is doing it, I, I mean, I don't know what goes on at the Aggie School, uh, or the other departments. Um, but I, but look at the golf course, uh, look at other departments, you're not a uni- union shop. And, uh, again, this is news to me that you have a, 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 a legal opinion that says otherwise. So if, you know, I, I don't, I would love to see the unvarnished legal opinion from, from Michelle McNulty, no one has shared that, uh, with us, and, and so that would be great.
That's what I said, that's, that's why I suggested get you that legal, uh, statement, that might help clarify some of the conflicts that you have.
But, you know, I'm not gonna address every misstatement that, that I just heard, that's why I wanna sit with the three Commissioners. You people are supposed to be running the county, and, and just sit down and, and, and get these registry staff positions, whether they're union or non-union. Uh, first of all, their promotions filled, and, and also, um, you know, uh, entry-level positions filled as well. But, I think what's missing, uh, and again, I, I value unions. I, I, you've heard it before, and you're gonna hear it again, my dad climbed thirty-eight years, he was in a union for the Boston-Addison, I was, I grew up in a union family. I still have union members, uh, in my family, and there's a valid collective bargaining agreement. Now, I may be management, but we've tried to develop and have developed harmonious work relations over here with every registry worker, including the union. And, again, you, you can, you, you know, this is news to me, uh, you know, uh, again, you know. I keep hearing, you know, how, how laws get violated, I tried to tell you back a, a while ago that laws were being violated, no one listened, and you lost in court, and I know you're appealing it. But you lost in court again on May fifteenth, and you lost just this week in the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts, your petition was, was denied. So, it's always the person, the staff, saying everyone else is not following the rules or not following laws. And yet the only person who has been found in violation of law has been your county director. All I'm saying is, there's a valid union contract, I wanna sit down with the Commissioners. That's who I wanna sit down with and get this resolved for the good of everyone. But as far as I'm concerned, those, we validly, under the union contract, I'm authorized to put a posting up. We put a posting up, no one told me I couldn't put a posting up. It was put on a union bulletin board, there are union rules. And so, you could talk about, oh, it's too bad these poor people aren't getting their jobs, I agree with you, they should have gotten it a long time ago. We signed papers that said they should, it should have been effective June third. We've had these personnel papers over you now for a couple of weeks, you never said any of this last week. Um, and what I'm saying is, you know, let's be fair, um, why were those union postings torn down? It's not only unprofessional contact, conduct, it violated the decency to these union workers. That you come over here, you ask union people, where's the bulletin board, and then you remove the posting. We put it back up, and because, and again, I wanna see the unvarnished opinion of, of Michelle McNulty. But as far as, again, I'm not a labor law expert, I'm not an expert on the other law that I had to litigate by myself, and we won. I'm trying to have a conversation with you, so we're not in the position we were on that, on, on the other case, where I try to have conversation.
You're saying the same thing, I, I think, I think so, I, I may have touched upon the core on this particular issue, this one. You, let's not talk about the other issues, I didn't wanna get into the other lawsuits, good, bad, you won, you lost, whatever. This is a particular issue affecting.
Uh, one.
People in your department that deserve to get the raise, but there's a procedure to follow, and I'm gonna take your, your word. That you're saying perhaps you feel conflicted because there's something in a, a contract, and then there's a new book that we've, we've, we've adopted. So maybe perhaps we'll need to get you that opinion from council for you to review. And then after that, maybe we can have Mr. O'Donnell in for a talk with us, to see if you get that squared.
Put it on the agenda next Wednesday, put, put it on next Wednesday so we can resolve this, but I'm not conflicted. I grew up in a union-backed family, there's a collective bargaining agreement, and you, what you're now saying, you guys are now saying, under the law, your handbook, um, trumps. Personnel rules, and your handbook trumps state laws, and your handbook trumps federal laws and federal regulations. And I guess you're telling me your handbook trumps collective bargaining agreements.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, there's a collective bargaining agreement, I'll let the union, the union, you know, it, it's their, you know, issue, but I, I do believe in union contracts.
Okay, alright, you made your point, you made your point.
Thank you, Mr.
So can we have a meeting next Wednesday with the Commissioners?
I can't promise you that, I haven't even looked at the agenda yet. You, you, go ahead.
Um, I, I'd like to try to resolve this.
Excuse me, Register O'Donnell, I'm speaking, thank you.
John Cronin speaking now.
Notwithstanding the rant that we just heard from the register, which is consistent with his inability to recognize facts, there is a handbook in place.
Correct.
It has been repeated to this elected official and his staff for months. How to follow the handbook. He, he consistently refuses to do it. The collective bargaining agreement, as I stated, is his ruse. It has nothing to do with the requisition of a position, which he never did, he never complied with that portion of this, of this handbook. He did the same thing with the non-union position, so this is not about unions or anything like that. It's about his inability, his inability and his staff's inability to read the handbook, follow the instructions. In my humble opinion, this is a power struggle, as it is with everything with the register. He is looking to, he, he is looking to exploit whatever he can to try to find fault with the way that this office does its business. We are professionalizing a process, we have a handbook in place that's quite effective, modern and consistent with other public operations. His inability, his inability to follow that handbook is the core issue, period. I'll be happy to go over there and bring some highlighters and show him the areas that his staff and he have omitted. This is not a union issue, it's a comprehension issue. And the misstatements and misdirection and comments that he's made today are nothing more than a cloud to pass over this whole process. I reject what he says, I implore him to follow the process, so these employees that we all value can receive their promotions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, listen, this is getting out of your hand as usual.
It's unfortunate, um, Mr. Chairman, but you know.
It's tremendously unfortunate, Mr. O'Donnell, as an elected official, you again proved to your constituents your inability to professionally manage your operation. Your incompetence and your staff's inability to follow this are leading your organization to non-compliance, thank you.
Well, I'll stand on my record, my record exists far before you came on, uh, board, and quite frankly, that's why, Mr. Chairman, I want to sit down with you people. He is so bitter that he's been found by law to have violated the law, they're just retaliating, so.
Perhaps, Senator O'Donnell, you can explain to those listening what law was violated, because I think, again, you're misstating fact, thank you.
I, I listen, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna blend one, one issue into another.
No, and and that's fair, I'm just trying to point out, the three, if the three commissioners and and my staff and you, you, we could just sit down at a meeting and kind of get this done, so things can go. I I I'm sorry, I I follow a union contract, it's not a ruse. It's, it's, it's black and white to me as far as a union contract. Uh, you know, uh, the unions built this country, the working class people built this country, and I'm forever grateful that I got a great staff, union and non-union. So it's, it's not a ruse to me, uh, these people are getting hurt, but they were valid promotions, now suddenly what, you know, we have a process that's in the contract as far as evaluating these, um, promotions and who applies, we did that, and, uh, you know, and I'd just like to move it forward, so.
Follow the handbook, Mr. Register, follow the handbook, Mr. Register, thank you.
Talk it to the commissioners, please, I'm just asking the commissioners if we can have a meeting next week, uh, seven days from now, uh, June twelfth.
We may have a meeting, we may have a meeting, uh, Register, but it's not next week. Okay, I don't want you to to hang up the phone under any other illusions, okay? We set the, we set the agenda.
No, man, that's fine, when, how about the, the week after?
It's, no, it's not next week, Register.
No, I meant the week after, whatever week that is.
Let me talk for a minute, we have wide latitude here. But I'd like to throw one question in here, since we always hear of your union background and everything, et cetera, et cetera. From ninety-two to two thousand and two, when you were chairman of this board, did you ever open the county handbook, did you ever open the personnel handbook, did you follow the handbook?
Well, most certainly, John Gillis himself, actually Peter Collins, uh, Bruce Olson before Peter Collins, Peter defeated, uh, Bruce. Um, you know, we, you know, we, we ran a good show, I I just want to resolve this, uh, for the good of the, the, you know.
That's a big question, you'll have two weeks.
If we could just get a date, if it's not next week, how about the week after, um, the eighteenth or the twentieth or the nineteenth?
We'll set the agenda.
Oh, that's great.
Give you as much notice as I can. That's the end of this discussion, Commissioner Collins.
What was, um, Attorney McNulty's recommendation?
She recommended that on these particular two promotions that they be rejected until the registry complies with the handbook.
Now, this is our lawyer talking, Register. All right, I think we've gone.
No, no, that's, that's, if you could send that opinion over, that's great, because this is the first I've, I've, I've heard that, I didn't hear it last week.
We're gonna get that opinion to you, and we'll try, again, to share the sides with Mr. Cronin, but we'll try to have a meeting as you requested, and I think in the bottom line, we all want to try to get your department moving forward. We want to, don't lose sight of the fact that people are people, they have a right to get promotions, but there's a certain way to do it. We want to make sure we're on the same page and get off to a better start, so we gotta get going, though, thank you, Bill. See you in a bit.
Regular regent, item number nine, Registry of Deeds.
So we have to, I made a motion, I think.
I'm sorry.
You didn't, you didn't actually make a motion, you said, I wanted to talk about, that's what you said, so there's no actual motion, but.
We don't need to do anything on that, then?
I think.
It's on our agenda.
Yeah, we have to make a motion.
Two nulls of appointments, yeah, you're correct.
I'll make a motion, I make a motion, we reject the proposed promotion of the head clerk and the head administrative client until and if the Registry of, uh, of Deeds complies with all terms and so all terms associated with the hiring process as defined in the employee handbook as recommended by our council.
Could I politely ask, uh, say, using the word reject, could it be, we moved to postpone?
It, it, it doesn't matter if it's a postpone or reject, because it has to start from scratch, the whole process, if we comply with the handbook.
It does?
Reject was the word by council.
Okay, okay, I see, because again, we have to do the process, and you're right, you couldn't, okay.
On the motion, we have a second.
Yeah, I'll second it, it's unfortunate.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So we're rejecting on a three to zero, well, thank you, number nine. Registry of Deeds Union Employees Vacation Carryover Request for our approval.
That one's okay.
You have it in front of you.
Any problem with that?
No.
Okay.
All right, you have it in front of you.
We don't need the person, right?
No.
Okay.
When's, when's presented?
I I had it somewhere, just.
Yeah, it's here, it's in the package.
I'll make a motion to approve uh, the Registry of Deeds Union Employee Vacation Carryover Request at present.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded, let me just count them, one, two.
I said three.
Three.
I had it.
Four.
I'm fine.
Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen. I don't want to make any mistakes here, sixteen. Seventeen. Eighteen. Nineteen. Twenty-one.
Yeah.
Okay, just for the record, there are twenty-one.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded to approve Registry of Deeds Union Employees Vacation Carryover Request, all in favor?
Aye.
It is done, thank you. Moving right along.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll do the.
Number ten.
Yep.
Payroll expense warrant.
Okay, we got a bunch, a lot of opera today, some good, good stuff. Move approval of the following, uh, warrant number twenty-four dash forty-eight, payroll of the county. Move approval of the sum one hundred forty-nine thousand, twenty-four dollars, forty-five cents, so move.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle.
So move.
I second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Second.
Next.
Warrant list six dash five dash twenty-four for the Walser recreational facility credit card payment. Move the sum of forty thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars, um, so move.
Second.
All in favor, all, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Third, move approval of oh-six dash oh-one dash twenty-four, the expense of the county, the amount six hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, forty-four cents, so move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
The next group are all opera warrant items, they're all listed on twenty-four dash forty-eight. First, Opera Medfield, a hundred and five thousand, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Second, Opera Weymouth, two million, two hundred ten thousand, four hundred four dollars, thirty-seven cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Third, Opera Milton, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, fifteen dollars, so moved, second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Fourth, Opera Canton, fifty thousand.
Second.
Sorry, Charlie, fifty thousand.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
And last one, which is going, twenty-four dash forty-eight, Opera Walpole, one million, one hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred forty dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That concludes that.
So that concludes.
Mr. Chairman.
Payroll expense warrants, next is, the report on, uh, is it necessary to give a report or?
Yeah, I'll be brief.
Go ahead, that's all right, you don't.
Commissioners, you just approved three point seven million dollars in, with these five applications. Brings you to over one hundred and fifteen million dollars awarded to date by far the most of any other county in Massachusetts. Uh, the five awards, starting with the first one for Medfield, a hundred and five thousand dollars was a revenue replacement item for water meter, water meter transceiver units. The second one was a large one, as Commissioner Stady read, from the town of Weymouth, two point two million dollars. It's an infrastructure sewer pump station rehabilitation on, uh, Alton Terrace at Widow, Widow Womit Road Sewer Pump Station. Uh, the third one was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars with the town of Milton, um, this was a revenue reimbursement uh, item for the Harland Street Culvert, and current calendar year can speak, twenty twenty-two infiltration and inflow investigations. The second to last one was the town of Walpole, uh, one point one four two million dollars to support public health. Um, this is, uh, seeking funding for a contract for design development on a hundred percent CDs bidding for renovations at the Walpole High School, which will improve programmatic deficiencies as well as replacing, renovating, modernizing school facility systems and eliminating overcrowding. Um, incidentally, this award pretty much taps out the town of Walpole.
Okay, thank you. Do you know how much that means, they got there?
Pardon.
Do you know how much altogether they got?
Walpole?
Yes.
Four point seven million dollars.
Wow.
And then finally, the town of Canton, fifty thousand dollars. This was a revenue replacement item for rental assistance to, um, nine thousand plus households in the town of Canton. Um, as we just hover around the closeout process, I wanted to note that we had a meeting today with Canton to discuss not just this application, but their next one, they have two more applications to come, they're done. The next one's a big one, so we're half a million dollars in premium pay, uh, it's very, very comprehensive, a lot of work has gone into it. Cliff and Larson has already reviewed, uh, substantially the detail. There were a couple of things they needed to iron out, we cleared those up this morning, so we're expecting that, um, that item to be placed into the portal very shortly. And there's a final one of forty, forty-four thousand dollars, give or take, that they're lining up right now, and, uh, we expect to see that in the next couple of weeks, so Canton's very close to the end. We got a very complimentary email from the Canton Town Administrator, who was hoping to be on the call today, but had, um, grievance hearing, uh, that collided with his availability, but they were very appreciative of the county working with them and helping them reach, um, near the finish line.
That's great.
And at this point, that is all I have at this time.
We thought total amount was given out now.
One, just about one hundred and fifteen million. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Fantastic, thank you.
One fifteen, I don't like thirty-seven, gone.
Great, great job, great job.
Okay, upper warrants approval, we did that, bid openings, we did.
Right.
Okay, wrong page. Three.
Contract?
Contract awards, we have none. Number fifteen, request for civic rate at President's Golf Course, there are two letters in our, uh, two requests in our packet. One is from Quincy Youth Hockey, uh, who's been having their attorney for twenty-five or twenty-six years at President's.
You want to step down and make that motion, Joe?
The date is here, yes. Go ahead.
No, no, you can step down and make the motion if you want.
No, that's all right, I just.
I'll just, I'll move approval of the Quincy Youth Hockey, uh, organization for their tournament at June twelfth to have the, uh, charity, uh, discount rate at our course, second.
Second request.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye, okay, second request is from the Kevin J. Ryan Memorial Golf Tournament. D N F County Commissioners, we're seeking your support in a char, free charity golf tournament being held at President's Golf Course on Friday, June twenty-fourth.
Chairman, could we delay that one week?
Absolutely.
Couple of questions, maybe have Bill or John, uh, let me, Bill could check that one out, um.
Okay, this, this, this background here, which will be helpful to those ever gonna. Okay, into it, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to delay the second request, uh, so that we can have some questions answered, we, we need to get right to it, because it's June twenty-first.
Right. But youth hockey's on.
That's fine, all in favor, aye, that's it, uh, that's that, next.
Oh, April trial balance? Trial balance?
April trial balance, which is in the packet, here it is.
Last week, this was proposed, but did make your packet, we apologize, the, uh, the April trial balances before you, for acceptance.
So this is the April trial and balance dated, of course, April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any comments?
Why is, why is group insurance highlighted here?
I don't. Highlighted by the county treasurer.
By the treasurer?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the trial balance of April thirty, twenty-four. Uh, move the approval of the sum sixty-eight million, eight hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-six cents, so move.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the trial balance, uh, dated four twenty-four, four thirty, twenty-four, all in favor? It is approved, thank you very much, next. Quincy Youth Hockey, okay. Report to the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a few items, um, earlier this week, Mr. Buckley, I had Mr. Buckley send out an email to all Norfolk County cities and towns asking if they have any interest in veteran service organizational, um, support, uh, veteran service officer support. As you may know, the county had previously had regional services in this space, uh, since Mr. Kurtz's retirement. Uh, we were interested to see if there was still any lingering interest. Um, we received a preliminary answer that, uh, some of the counties, um, including Wellesley, Needham, and perhaps three others have joined together and have a singular solution, they might be looking for a backup, uh, but not a full-time, yeah, so. We'll continue to explore the, um, remaining communities in Norfolk County to see if there is a space where this particular regional service may resurface and see if the county can help fill that void. So we're still looking to it.
Okay.
Um, the FY twenty-two audit I mentioned before is close, I had a final call with our auditor this week. She is finalizing, um, the SEPA report, which is your federal financial filing, as well as the management letter and related documents, I hope to have those quite shortly. Um, the Retham District Court, uh, signed, Mr. Chairman, I was informed, um, because I know you're sensitive to that topic. Our facility, our facility department informs me will be installed June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. The other location and dates will fall, so Retham first, about two weeks.
Okay, good.
And then just briefly for the commissioners, as we are in the month of June now, uh, we are closing down our fiscal year notice regarding any, uh, contracts, encumbrances, and transfers have been sent out by both Philion Tosca and Nancy Rockwell, uh, so we encourage departments that are listening to hear to those deadlines as we try to help you optimize your year-end position. The county, as you know, is currently under a spending and hiring freeze. Uh, I don't expect to make a recommendation on lifting that until after the county closes fiscal year twenty-four, which will happen sometime around July tenth or eleventh. So sometime in, sometime in the middle of July, we'll have a conversation about whether or not our revenue position is solid enough that we may lift those conditions. Just looking ahead, that's my thing. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Quick one, real quick, a quick question, sure. Just a quick update, if you have one, on your electric charging station?
I don't have an update, we filed it, and it's with Brian Laughlin, who is working with the state for a grant.
Okay.
So, waiting to hear from him.
Okay.
At some point, I'd like to know who the sole person that we're dealing with is on there.
Sure.
Outside stuff, I may be able to help.
Okay.
Okay.
And do we have any dates looking at the summer for the multi-country meeting?
So I sent an email to Chairman Call, uh, Commissioner Collins and Commissioner Mitchell today, um, kind of giving them an update on some contractual activity we've had, um, I suspect we can hopefully have a meeting in July, the location, however, is to be determined. Uh, we'll have some conversations with our partners to find out what's the best place to meet.
Stay clear of Friday, if you can. It's possible, it's possible. Um, the other thing was, great graduation ceremony at the Aggie last week, that we all more or less attended, and uh, the place looks fantastic.
Yeah.
Many of the people did a great job.
Did, I'm sorry, it was great ceremony.
It was outside.
Outside, okay.
Yeah.
I thought the sun did finally.
They lucked out with the weather, they lucked out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good, it was good.
You gave a nice speech.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great moments here, the award in the former to a veteran of Vietnam.
That made chain of five.
Yes, that's what I heard, that's what I heard, that's great, that's great.
Probably more than five, I'm sorry, that was a great touch, great touch.
Thanks, nice touch. That was all I had.
Last call.
Oh, I'm sorry, just to mention, United Way is looking to come in next week, and, uh, we had said that the twelfth would be okay, Matt Flaherty. So he's.
That is on the next.
That's on next week, so, yeah, I told him to reach out to Mr. Cronin directly to make sure he goes over any questions about PowerPoints or little presentation they may have for us, but.
Thank you.
All right, so let's give you a heads up on that, I'll be calling. Look forward to that.
Last call, item number eighteen. Merge the items and topics the chair did not raise or anticipate, I have none.
Well, you're not the kind of media Peter Collins has, let me tell you, what is the difference?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion adjourn at, uh, two forty-six.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.